It is 6:30, and we are going to call the City Council Meeting for Tuesday, December 10th, to order. And next up is approval of agenda. Is everyone good with the agenda tonight, and the order, and everything on it?
On the agenda, I'd like to pull 7.4.
You had to correct me if I'm wrong here on this. Mr. Hollenier?
In the back.
With my understanding, the only person who's been pulling an item is the person who put it on item. Am I incorrect in that?
You might be correct on this. I would defer to whomever put it on, and see.
I do not want to pull 7.4.
Sir, we probably need to get Hala to review this. There is a policy on that. I think you probably want to get a policy review before you move on past this.
So, Mr. Hala, we are on approval of agenda. Section 2, and 7.4 has been asked to be removed by Mayor Pro Tim Dan Tucker, which will be discussed and considered abolished in the current Water Committee.
Do we have agenda policy specifically on the...
Yes, sir. One has been passed. In fact, we're looking at amending that resolution. In fact, it's on item 7.5 today. But the current resolution allows for a supermajority to remove.
Does it work now? Is that one working?
Yes.
Okay. So, I think any attorney will tell you that if you, well, even in first-year law school, will tell you, if you have a policy, you have to follow it. But my question would be, since it's on the agenda to potentially be amended, would you want to wait, maybe do that item first, and then decide whether or not you want to pull 7.4?
My preference would be just to pull the item.
Okay. Well, I mean, if that's what our policy says, then that's what our policy says.
Guess you'll have to put it to a vote, so we'll see how that one goes. I don't have an envelope for a prediction tonight, but I already know. Is this the only item in question, Mr. Tucker? So, 7.4 is the only item you want to remove. We don't have that confused with 7.6.
Absolutely not.
Okay. Guess we'll take it to a vote, since that's the only change being requested. Mr. Easter, would you like to remove this item? Your vote to remove 7.4, yea or nay?
Yea.
Floyd, I'm sure you're yea, but what is you got officially?
That'd be Councilman McLendon to you, Mayor.
Yea.
Mr. Brewer?
Nay.
Mr. Day?
Yea.
And Mayor Pro Tim?
Yea.
All right, we will remove the opportunity to abolish the Water Committee. If you can stand by, we're going to get to some rules of decorum here shortly. Just give me an opportunity, and that is all I'm asking, just for tonight, please. Mr. Easter, why don't you lead us in our invocation tonight, please?
Thank you. Dear Lord, please help us find the wisdom to resolve issues before us, and to find a way to find common unity to resolve all of these apparent divisions. In Jesus' name, we pray.
Mr. Brewer, you lead us in our pledges, please, sir. All right. We're off to an awesome start. So, being that we're, had some issues last time, for those that attended the Town Hall, I appreciate it; for those that watched it, I appreciate it. I know that was taking time out of your evening to do so. So, we're going to go over the rules of decorum, probably a little bit more in-depth than we've normally done in the past. So, the purpose of the rules of decorum is so that we can ensure that our meeting at the City Council is going to be conducted that allows us to do the city business effectively. We're going to ensure that the members of the public who attend the meetings of the City Council can be heard in a fair, impartial, and respectful manner. My ask of the speakers. During your citizens' comments period, please keep your items to three minutes. I'm going to ask Angela to make sure that we stay on course with that going forward. So, when you're asked to stop, that's when you're going to be asked to stop, so just have your own phone up there to watch your time. You can also be heard in any public hearing, agenda item, as well as any times with permission by the presiding chair, which is me. So, if I do recognize you, then you can speak, and you usually generally only have about 60 seconds to do so. Rules for the members of the public. There will be no shouting, unruly behavior, distracting side conversations, or speaking out when another person is talking. That includes those who are on the podium, as well as up here on the dais. Defamation, intimidation, personal affronts, profanity, or threats of any violence of any kind, it's not going to be tolerated from the people out there, as well as up here. There will be no booing, hissing, foot stomping, parading of collapse. The reason I'm asking on the parading of collapse is because it can just send a signal of disruption, and I just, my goal is to keep tempo down, or temperatures down, and allow us to conduct business. If there is a violation, or anything that the chair sees, I'll hit the gavel, and I'll just give you a warning. If there's a second one to the same person, another gavel hit, at that point, the next, after that, you'd be asked to leave. So, basically, you're going to get two verbal warnings. Let's just not have any. The council from the dais will not engage the citizens unless in a public hearing. The chair of the council run the meeting on any issues that come up. That is what I do. If the council has a problem with somebody, then they need to afford me the opportunity. If the council engages with citizens, then it goes back to what happened in the last one. So, that is my ask of rules of decorum. I hate that we had to go into that much detail, but here we are. So, we will go into citizens' comments next. First up is Rich Dean. And again, we'll be at three minutes tonight, please.
My name is Rich Dean, 708 Kensington Drive, McLendon Chisholm. Councilman Tucker, Day, McLendon, and Easter, I appreciate the document that was attached to this meeting's agenda by Councilman Tucker. I think that, I think when the water didn't come out of the shower that fateful day a while back, most, if not all, of McLendon Chisholm had two questions: Who can get us water, and who can do it the quickest? With this document, I think you have effectively convinced most of McLendon Chisholm that the city leaders of McLendon Chisholm are not the answer to those questions. What you are doing with Agenda Item 7.6 is not just getting in the way of us getting our water, but it is a colossal waste of money, which, by the way, is another thing the four of you have done in a very effective way. You are wasting McLendon Chisholm taxpayer money, RCH customer money, and probably legal fees for black land in High Point. I would say that the four of you have hit a grand slam on wasting money. I hope Councilman Easter and McLendon will speak up tonight on this concept that Councilman Tucker has presented. I know we've had problems in the past actually defining what a water plan is, but please weigh in on why these ideas are the best way for McLendon Chisholm to move forward. Don't let Councilman Day and Tucker take all the heat for something you both voted for. Finally, I would like an explanation of Item 6.5 on the consent agenda. For those that don't know, the consent agenda are items that will have no discussion. They are just approved en masse and passed into oblivion. Normally, this is a great way to move things along, but tonight I have a request for a discussion to at least answer questions from the October Sheriff's Report. When I see the words fraud and assault on the sheriff's report that takes place at an address known as City Hall, I get curious. Can you address the item for fraud that apparently needed more than one unit to respond to that took place on October 31st in 2024? That seems like a really big deal to call the sheriff and then another car. Can you also address the item for assault that took place on 10/22? An alleged assault took place at City Hall on or near the time of a City Council meeting? I was at that meeting. Please tell me, what did I miss? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Next up is Sherri London.
Sherri London, 216 Harvest Ridge. I'm speaking on Agenda Item 7.6, the so-called water plans. And let's start by going back to basics. What exactly is a plan? A plan is a detailed, actionable framework that outlines specific steps, resources, and timelines to achieve a goal. First, a plan has an objective, a clearly defined goal. It has steps or actions, the specific sequential tasks needed to reach that goal. It has a timeline with deadlines for key milestones for the plan's completion. You identify resources, the people, tools, materials. You assign responsibilities, include a RACI chart to define who's responsible, who's accountable, who's consulted, and who's informed along the way. A good plan also has metrics, the criteria used to measure both progress and success. And finally, a plan considers contingencies, ways to overcome potential challenges and risks. A plan bridges the gap between an idea or a vision and its execution. By that definition, what we have in this agenda packet couldn't really be called a plan. Now, there was a time when I was rooting for the city to take over RCH, but that time came to an end when David Naylor got elected to the board and demonstrated by his actions that he was capable of achieving the goal of getting us the water we needed. I didn't take his word for it. I pulled public records to see for myself what he was doing to move RCH forward. You see, actions speak louder than words, your actions and RCH's actions. You, the city, told us you wanted to take over, but your action in May of 2023 was to deny the confidentiality agreement that would have allowed access to the very records you needed to start that process. You told us you still wanted RCH in June of 2023, but when RCH put out a request for proposal, the city's action was not a response to that bid request, but a vote to sue RCH for alleged Toma violations. The city told us RCH would never get a direct connection with North Texas, yet RCH did that in December of 2023, a little over a year ago. You told us the missing financials from pre-Naylor operations meant they'd never get financing for their infrastructure, and then, when they did, your action was a vote to stop them. Let's just stop for a moment and remember, if the city had shut down that loan, it would have stopped all construction during the legal battle. It could have added years to our water crisis, but you gave no explanation for that vote or the vote to cancel their contract, only some claims would save us money. So, is this 7.6 plan the vote? Because, pardon the phrase, that plan simply doesn't hold water. Our goal is water for the customers, and yours still seems to be a water utility for the city, no matter what it takes, who it hurts, what it ultimately costs, which you can't say you have any idea of, or how much longer it could take to solve the water supply issue. Or you want to force two independent businesses to do business together, whether it makes engineering, regulatory, or financial sense. In your quest to save us money, you've done nothing but cost us money. It's time the city got out of the way.
Thank you, Sherri. Next up is Bob Fattick.
Bob Fattick, 1156 Laverne. I have a few comments regarding the events that took place in these chambers on 12th of November 2024. Councilmen, by sticking to your decision to terminate the contract for RCH and Sonoma Verde, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Day, Mr. Easter, and Mr. McLendon, you have demonstrated blatant disrespect for the concerns and decisions and wishes of the residents of McLendon Chisholm and the ETJ. Mr. Tucker, your derogatory comments were inappropriate on a live stream City Council meeting and should have never addressed the city resident that way. If you apologized publicly, you'd be a bigger man. Mr. Easter, you need to quit patronizing the citizens and talking out both sides of your mouth. Stop telling us one thing and voting with the boys. Mr. Day, you've not treated any of us with any kind of respect. You usually sit up there slouched in your chair, not looking at any of us when we talk to you. Your head is slightly tilted to one side, like you know better than us. Clearly, you don't. Despite what people in the city want, you believe you know everything. So, please, don't sit in your chair and lecture like you know everything. You don't seem to, and the game you're playing is about to end. Please stop squandering taxpayers' money to fund your pipeline that's just a pipe dream. Mr. Mayor and Mr. Brewer, thank you for looking out for the citizens by being transparent in your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fattick. Dennis London.
Dennis London, 216 Harvest Ridge Drive. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. The frustration and disappointment from the people of this city regarding the continued attempts to interfere with RCH, well, they're undeniable. We've made it overwhelmingly clear, we don't support this. After the September vote, citizens gathered over 325 signatures in under one week, supporting RCH as the continued supplier to Sonoma Verde. Time and again, we've asked you to stop meddling. Under David Naylor's leadership, RCH has made substantial progress to secure our water future, yet instead of supporting that progress, some on this council persist in playing at politics. Let me remind you, the last person who thought they knew better than the people was sent packing by a landslide. These past months have made two things. These past months have made two things perfectly clear. First, your plans. This Pelosi-style approach, where you insist you have a plan but don't reveal it until it's actually forced through, has no place here. The first so-called plan is nothing more than a patchwork of vague ideas based on conversations with people who have no decision-making authority, not to mention, it completely lacks any factual support. Is this the result of months of work? Worse, the alternative plan confirms that the endgame is still about taking over RCH. This kind of political maneuvering is exactly what the people of this city overwhelmingly rejected. Second, change is coming. While someone in this council has been focused on aggravating the situation, the people have been rallying candidates to replace you. In May, three of those seats are up for reelection. It's evident that new representation is coming soon. I expect that any actions taken by you against the clear will of the people will be reversed by that incoming council. This is your last chance to salvage what remains of your legacy. What you choose to do in these final months will define how your service to this community is going to be remembered. You've heard the people, you've read the comments, seen their petition signatures, and now even the water suppliers have stated they don't want to meet with you. Why aren't you listening? Enough is enough. It's time you stopped ignoring the people you were elected to represent.
Thank you, Dennis.
I'm Sherri Couch, 936 Eagle Pass, and I want to make this very simple, because I think it is really simple. We all just wanted water, adequate supply, safe, and that's what we're getting through RCH. We don't need the city to keep interfering with what RCH is doing, because that does nothing but cost the city people money. I'm not, I'm not in the city, obviously, but I have a say because I'm part of RCH, and I'm here to voice how simple this is. RCH is doing the job that we want them to do, and I would like for you to leave them alone and let them proceed with getting us what we want, which is water directly from the North Texas Municipal Water District. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Nichol, 612, 612 Kentwood. When we moved here 15 years ago, we chose this place because of the small-town rural atmosphere, nice homes, friendly reputation, and that held up until the water problem started. We'd only lived in larger cities with municipal water, and so initially, that looked like a reasonable approach, and given RCH's poor standing at that point, it seemed like having a municipal water authority would be a better approach. But the way the city council handled the initial actions at that time proved to be very unfortunate, and the way RCH responded was also unfortunate. They, they were not able to convince everyone that they were able to meet the requirements that they were going to have to get the permission, the authority, to, to move ahead and bring themselves back from the dead. But this is, the last two years have been a slow-motion train wreck, and it's sad and embarrassing, but we have to do this, and I wish that it would stop. I don't have a solution. You're all smarter than, than I am, and I don't have anything I can offer you except the way I feel and the observations that I have made. I think there's blame and credit on both sides. I think the council deserves credit for trying to save the taxpayers' money. If there was a, a cheaper solution, that would have been great, but as the evidence mounted that that wasn't happening, it's time to cut losses and revert back to what RCH has clearly shown to be a path forward. Until they hit a roadblock, I think we need to allow them to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So as always, that is everyone that filled out a form. I always give an opportunity. If there's nobody else that wants to speak, then I will close citizens comments. Mr. Powers, you want to speak? Is there going to be anybody else after Mr. Powers? Okay, Mr. Powers, just make sure after you finish to fill out a form for the secretary.
Don Powers, 1847 Navarre Way, Sonoma Verde. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate all of you serving as volunteers on city council. That's oftentimes a thankless job, as we are seeing. You've heard a lot of great commentary tonight, so I'm just here to tell you that I 100% support RCH in what they're doing. I think they are the path forward, and I think that everything that, that is being done against them now needs to be stopped immediately and allow them to proceed. They are our water supplier in Sonoma Verde. We need them, and they need us. So I think if we just work together, get out of the way, and let them do what they're, what they're clearly trying to do to make things better, then I think we'll have the success that we're all looking for. But I have a request that you four gentlemen would cease and desist with this, put it to bed, and let's let RCH do what it needs to do. Lastly, I will tell you, every $20,000 that you spend, every $20,000 you spend represents the taxes of approximately 33 households in the city of McLendon Chisholm. Thank you.
Thanks, John. If you can, just make sure you fill out a form so that we can get that to the secretary. Is there anyone else before I close? Comments? Mr. Goodwin, you want to speak?
I would like to speak, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Goodwin, and then just again, fill out a form. Thanks.
Cool. Man, it's been a rough couple of weeks. I do want to thank Mr. Day for sitting down and taking the time to listen. I appreciate it, Paul. And Brian, I've spoken to you and Jerry. I also was able to get some good answers out of RCH, and you guys know this stuff. You guys all know it, and I don't think you care. So if you don't mind, guys, I'm just going to speak to the people that do. I think you guys should know the facts. This water problem's solved. RCH has a $13.1 million contract signed. $20 million is funded in their bank. Ground has been broken. I don't know where this $40 million number came from. I've been told it's an RCH number. I've verified with RCH that it is not an RCH number. The city is not tied to this loan. In fact, I doubt the city knows the type of loan, actually. So I don't, I don't know that, but I actually don't think the city has the facts here, and I just want to share that with you people, because I don't feel like anybody's listening to you. So I went out and did some research. Don't take my word for it. Go out and email RCH. They'll tell you. It's all I did. So that's all. I apologize for any disrespect, turn my back to you guys, but you guys aren't listening.
I believe that is all. So at 6:58, we will close citizens comments. Had an eye exam today, so I apologize. Can't see. I hear the laughter. We are at consent agenda, so if there's any items that need to be removed, please do so. If not, I will entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda.
I move to approve the, the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
If there's no other discussion on the consent, all those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
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 Show that as unanimous. God, I can't see. I'm going to, real quick, ASO, on 7.3, that is pulled officially, correct? It is not? Okay. 7.1, Angela.
Discuss and consider approval of a final plat that provides for the development of 84 single-family lots, each with a minimum lot size of 1 half acre per lot on 67.52 acres of land located generally between 550 and Smith Road, directly behind McLendon Chisholm City Hall.
I will entertain a motion for approval on 7.1.
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, that opens it up for discussion. Conrad, to you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to immediately turn it over to our city planner, Mr. Woodbury, just to give a, just before I do, just a, a quick little increase of information. This is the Legacy Trails project, and I'm sure you're all aware of that, that through looking through your packet, but I'll turn this over to our city planner.
Thank you, Conrad, Mayor, members of the council. So the request is for the approval of a final plat for the development of 84 single-family lots on 67.52 acres of land located generally right behind City Hall. This is going to be phase one of phase three for Legacy Trails. And I did put some information here, so the owner or sub divider may, at, at his option, elect to combine the preliminary and final plats once A, B, and C are met. And so this project, it's those three, and so as a result, the applicant is combining their preliminary and final plats for this. But we will be moving in phases. So this is phase one. Phase two and phase three will go through P and Z and be back before council as well. Planning and zoning recommendation was approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report, and the staff is recommending approval, subject to the following conditions. So it is approval of the final engineering designs. Mr. Webb is here, he could speak to that, but I know that the developer, Mr. Webb, and Dubb have been having conversations. From what I understand, it is one particular engineering thing that could take just a little bit longer.
Right, and as long as, being it's a final plat, as long as it's the final plat, the condition is listed in the motion, then we can vote on this with that condition and move forward, if I'm correcting that.
Correct.
Okay. We will start down there with Mr. Easter, as always, sir.
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Mr. McLendon. Mr. Brewer.
Just a quick question. I noticed on, on this, it's a little different than the conceptual plan, and are we still dealing with the same number of lots for half acre, same number of lots for a half acre to an acre, and the same number of lots for an acre beyond?
Yes, so the only thing that changed was the, the addition of the two 1-acre lots.
Okay.
Mr. Day.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Tucker.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm good with this. This has gone under a significant review by our planner and Plan, P and Z, so I'm good with this.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Show that unanimous. A little, a little sooner. Apologize. And after you do that, Angela, 7.2 is next.
Discuss and consider approval of a final plat that provides for the development of 53 single-family lots, each with a minimum lot size of 1 acre of land on 68.598 acres of land located generally along Pullen Road with the Heritage Development.
I'll entertain a motion on 7.2.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, so the second, we'll kick it back to Conrad, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Similar to what Mr. Woodbury said with the last item, this is a phase three of, I believe, three phases for this Heritage subdivision. So they've come twice before to get approval. This is just their final phase to finish it out, and I'll turn it over to our city planner.
Thank you, Conrad, Mayor, members of the council. Like Conrad said, this is phase three of three for Heritage, and they are requesting their approval of the final plat for the 53 single-family lots on 68.598 acres. The planning and zoning recommendation was approval. Staff recommendation is also approval. This application is consistent with the approved concept plan, and it is administratively complete and complies with the city of McLendon Chisholm subdivision regulations and our comprehensive plan.
Thank you, ASO. Mr. Easter.
I don't have anything.
Mr. McLendon. Mr. Brewer.
Mr. Day.
Mr. Tucker. All right, well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous as well. So 7.3, Angela, and you're ready.
Discuss and consider the request from Brian Berry to approve a final plat that provides for the development of three lots for a commercial shopping center, the crossroads, the crossroads of McLendon Chisholm at the southeast corner of FM 550 and State Highway
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, back to you, Conrad.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is an exciting thing. We're getting more and more contact from commercial entities. This is another one that is, is looking to go in to our commercial sector. We're excited about it. There's some, just some specific technical things that, that I'll turn it over to the city planner to describe what those are and how we're addressing those.
Thank you, Conrad, Mayor, members of the council. So this is the request of a final plat that provides for the development of three lots for a commercial shopping center. So this is at the hard corner of 205 and 550, so it's catty-cornered to the Shell gas station. So that was rezoned as a PD in 2022, and that was a PD for mixed-use retail and commercial. The planning and zoning approved this, subject to the conditions as stated in this report. And so staff is recommending approval, subject to the following conditions, and so that is approval of the civil engineering designs as well. So this goes back to kind of with the Legacy Trails. Dubb has the civils, and he's reviewing, and I know that, I think that there is a specific issue there as well, that they're looking into, but that they're working into, and that should be resolved within the next few weeks. So as long as you state the motion with the condition, it should be fine.
So exactly the same as the first one, then?
Yes.
Very good. Okay. Mr. Easter.
Is Mr. Berry here? Okay. I live in this area, and there were some neighbors that are across the street from it that were concerned about not having a fence or a barrier or something with it. And I don't know that this is the appropriate time, forum, or place to try to bring that up. I don't think that it is, and so I just wanted to let Mr. Berry know that there's a concern about that, and, and that's between their location and cattle baron. And so that's just to get that on the record, so other than that, I got nothing.
And I'm sorry, councilmember, so you said that there was concern about, I just want to write this out so I can speak with him.
That there are some homes across the street from where Mr. Berry's property is, and they wanted a wall or some barrier, because they were concerned about garbage and people walking over there into their neighborhood. And so they were hoping to get some sort of barrier, a wall, something over there. Just for full disclosure, I live in that area, so, you know, I don't want it to be viewed as, you know, biased or something. I just wanted to report that observation.
I'm going, the, there's going to recognize the P and Z chair to possibly help speak on that for you, Mr. Easter. Mr. Kitt.
Thank you, Mayor. The, this item was discussed at planning and zoning. Mr. Berry, Mr. Berry is well aware of it. The city has specific requirements in for a creating setback, a landscaping setback, and I think that would be the appropriate issue, is to bring it up to city planner, and that would be incorporated into the final design plan.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I brought that up so that it's on the record.
I just want, Mr. Berry is very aware of that, and we've discussed it extensively.
Thank you, Mr. Kibbit. Mr. McClendon? Mr. Brewer? Mr. Day?
Not, just a quick question for updates, because not necessarily with respect to Mr. Berry's property, but the Polani property next door. Has there been any alterations to the parking, the egress in that situation? Or has it not changed at all since the consequence of this work?
Ask you, ask that question one more time, because I wanna make sure-
Does this have any impact on the Polani parking situation that is improving that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And this, the only question I have, is its approval is contingent upon the following conditions, approval of civil engineering designs. What's the issue at hand that you're referring to that is keeping this back from full approval without conditions? You said there was an issue at hand that you need to discuss with Dufray.
No, I know that there is an issue. I know that I'm talking with Dub, and he said that they are trying to work out the specific issue. I can get you the specific issue, but I'm not-
You're not aware of-
Yeah, I wasn't privy to that conversation in those meetings, but I can get you the specific-
Okay, that'd be appreciated.
Yeah.
Thanks.
If there's no other discussion, I will take it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
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 Show that one unanimous as well. Moving right along, brings us to 7.5, Angela.
Discuss and consider approval to amend Resolution 2024-05 regarding agenda preparation.
Mr. Day? Oh, excuse me. I'll take a motion. On 7.5.
Yeah, I move that we amend Resolution 2024-05 regarding agenda preparation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Day?
Yeah, so this was an amendment, or this was a policy that we, in fact, we used a little earlier today, but that was passed earlier in the year. And the amendment really only does two very minor things, and one of them is, if my memory serves, is it moves the deadline to turn things into midday at 11:59 from what used to be 8:00 AM. That was one of the major things. There was another one, basically, that requires that the, what are we calling it here? The approval of the agenda actually appear on the, on the agenda itself as a manual, or as a meeting in each agenda henceforth. So those are the two main adoption changes that I think are relevant. There's some other stuff in here, minor changes or whatever, but effectively, it's, that's effectively what we're looking for, is to fix those two things.
So you need four extra hours? I mean, I'm assuming all the days of the week are long enough.
No, no, sir. So originally, it said 8:00 AM, but we just, as a policy, had been doing it at noon, so I'm just codifying what had been actually happening. So that's all. Basically, I'm giving the staff what they were already doing. I'm just putting it into the resolution.
I was under the understanding that it was in by, anything that was in by 8:00 AM, is that correct? Anything that was in by 8:00 AM would go on the agenda. It's not been going, we haven't been going till noon, from my understanding, at least in the last three or four council meetings. If it's not in by 8:00 AM, it's not on the agenda, right?
So this would extend it to 11:59?
So, in essence, you need four more hours.
Yeah, I guess that's what it does, yes.
I would think the whole week is good, but hey, Mr. Easter, do you have anything?
I do not.
Mr. McClendon? Brewer?
I was thinking, one of the things I noted was there, you dropped the requirement of a second sponsor?
Yes, yeah, thank you for the reminder, yes. It requires the requirement of a second sponsor, which we hadn't been requiring. There's another thing where we're, the mayor had actually graciously been letting us putting things out without requiring a second, and so we just simply went and dropped the language that required it officially in the resolution. That's all. Because again, we'd been doing it.
And then I guess my last question is, the other thing that I noticed was in paragraph C, the last line, that's an addition?
That might have been something I-
Where it says, furthermore, no person or entity shall have authority to alter, delete, delay, table, or interfere with items properly submitted to an agenda, except as allowed in this section?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do you have a question about that?
Yeah, I was just wondering what your thoughts were on that, because that's an addition.
That was something that, when we were doing the edits early on, that came up, I believe it was in reference to a parliamentary issue that came up, actually informed by what happened at county, at the county commissioners' court, if I can recall. I'm sorry, I'm looking for the exact language of where that was. Do you see it?
Yes. Yeah, it's paragraph C. It's the very last full sentence.
Can you give me the page number? Sorry.
I think it's 207. Is that right? Pull it up. I'm sorry, 223, or 224, 224? Yeah. I don't know, my notes are a little scratchy on here.
Oh, sorry, sorry, 225, paragraph C, I see now. Furthermore, no person or entity shall have authority to alter, delay, delete, table, or interfere with the, yeah, that's actually informed by what happened at Commissioners' Court, actually, about a month ago. So that's where that comes from. It's not based on any basis that happens here in the city council, but we've never done anything like that, so far as I can tell. But it's there as just a guarantee.
Thank you.
Mr. Tucker?
The only question I have is, extension from 8:00 until noon, effectively, does that put an onus on you?
As long as we have it no later than noon, because it does have to go to the attorney-
The process?
And, yeah, and I mean, there is a process, and if I don't have everything until noon, then that, that may delay you guys getting your copies-
Understood.
-early as well, so-
But you could negotiate through noon.
Noon is fine.
And Mr. Holland, does that uncover you in any fashion?
Oh, yeah, I'm just actually thrilled to be getting the agenda reviewed, so this would be great.
But moving to the noon hour as a cutoff period, is that okay? Are you okay with that?
If that's what council wants to do, I am fine with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Our city attorney has the next day of the week. He's a Tuesday guy.
All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, show that unanimous. Brings us to 7.6, Angela. Said it was unanimous.
You're a yes?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I misunderstood. I just wanted to make sure I was reporting right with that.
7.6, Angela, when you get ready.
Discuss and consider recommending the City of McClendon-Chisholm, RCH WSC, and Blackland WSC negotiate a water agreement based upon RCH becoming retail water distributor by means of water purchases through Blackland WSC, and request RCH enter into negotiations with the City of McClendon-Chisholm for transfer of assets based upon purchase price agreed, agreement between parties.
I'll look for a motion.
Motion to discuss and approve?
I'll second.
Is it an approval or a consider recommending?
A recommendation, if I recall.
All right, you're up, Mr. Tucker.
So you'll have, we're gonna have, this is out on the agenda, just put out last Friday, so I'm sure that most folks in the audience have already looked at this or read it. So we're gonna get this up on slides.
While they're getting that set up, I know this is gonna be contentious in some ways for some, so just a reminder, let's just keep the temps down. We'll hear Mr. Tucker out, and the DIAS, the DIAS will have questions, I'm sure.
Thanks, Mayor.
And real quick, is this online for viewers as well?
So everybody can read along with me, I guess, to some degree. So obviously, we're in a period of time where we're discovering that the cost of water being provided to McClendon-Chisholm and ETJ can be very expensive. RCH's current project will likely cost between $35 and $40 million. I understand that some people contend that that is not the case, however, because it's compared to Blackland's project, which is very similar. They have similar pump, station needs, pipeline, a distance that it traverses, storage needs, and completion dates. It's, it can be said to be very comparable. Other projects in the area, Blackland, obviously, is, has a project in place that's very similar, again, to RCH's. That's about $35 million. Heath is setting up a project currently. It's been approved by their city council for putting in six wells that'll provide about six million gallons of water. Each of these costs about $5 million apiece. Greenville has a large project, $90 million water project currently under organization. Tarrell, this was a project that was proposed to the city, I think, two years ago, and at that point in time, it was projected to be $61 million. There were going to be four parties working together on that project, but that has since fallen through. As far as RCH's best estimate, I don't have an estimate on what their project is going to be. I certainly have asked for that in the past, but again, we believe it's $35 million at least. At one HOA meeting, I think, RCH quoted a fee of between $35 and $40 million. There was one developer that spoke to RCH that where RCH asked for them to go in on a project that was gonna cost $35 million, so I assume that that was the same project as they're instituting currently. And then again, we've conversed with Blackland engineers, and they believe the project will be similarly costly. As always, the cost will be placed as a burden of debt on the, on the customer base, and so you would prefer to have a large customer base to distribute that debt over a period of time. In this case, apparently, RCH has 2,800 customers to distribute that debt, and I hope, we're optimistic that hopefully, if they do finish out with this project, they'll have a larger community to share that cost. So if you looked at plans, and I appreciate Sherri London's comments on what a plan is, this is conceptual. This is not so much of an idealized plan as she would be talking about, but it's conceptual, and so let's go through this. So in this case, I think this is something that appeals to most of all the folks in McClendon-Chisholm and ETJ is that RCH remains and sustains its autonomy. That seems to be important for them. The community wants that. RCH, in this instance, I would advocate that they negotiate with Blackland, who's getting their pipe from down south, and will be finishing that out in summer of 2026. They'll, Blackland would be the wholesaler, and RCH would be a retailer. It would be able to supply water to McClendon-Chisholm and ETJ. Under that condition, RCH would continue to service Sonoma Verde. I think the agreement that as RCH and Blackland negotiate an agreement as wholesaler and retailer, that we could concomitantly be proposing a termination of, our termination of the contract with Sonoma Verde, and renegotiate a contract between RCH and the city again. Again, make a comment on Blackland's connection to North Texas. They also have, and these seem to be two parallel, not necessarily competing, projects, but certainly, North Texas is amenable to providing for, allowing Blackland to have its pipe continued and finished at approximately the same time that RCH's will be, which is 2026, again, in the summer. The cost of Blackland's pipe is going to be effectively zero, in the sense that it's, developers paying for that, and that can be verified through, through Blackland itself. The connection that I'm advocating was initially, it seemed to be a plan that was talked about early on when David Naylor and RCH got together and spoke to Blackland on this issue of RCH connecting to Blackland and getting water from them. And at that point in time, I think it was, TNP did a study, and the cost of that connection would effectively be around $5.3 million. And certainly, this $5.3 million is a lot less than the $35 to $40 million that's currently projected as the cost for RCH to institute its pipeline from the south. So what are the benefits of, to RCH and its customers? Blackland can provide for all of McClendon-Chisholm and ETJ at build-out, and its own customer base at the same time. This has been assured by Blackland on multiple occasions and conversations that we've had. This can be accomplished by the summer or fall of 2026, if not sooner. I know that Jason over at Blackland has said a number of times that he'd like to see this sooner than later. There should be sufficient supplies for summer months when we run dry very often, if this is consummated. It relieves RCH customers from taking out a debt of $35 to $40 million, and there's minimal disruption in RCH services. Looking at the cost of a hookup between RCH and Blackland is approximately $5.3 million, but it could be less, especially if those costs are shared between the developer, Blackland, RCH, and McClendon-Chisholm. And so the cost might be less than $5 million, but using $5 million as a basis for a connection between RCH and Blackland, and if you want to rate this out at 3% for 30 years, which is kind of extended, would be $21,000 per month, would be the debt carried by 2,800 customers. Effectively, that would be about $8 a month per customer of RCH for the cost of a connection between RCH and Blackland. Over the duration of that loan, which would be a 30-year loan, would be about $2,800. Now, if you look at the $35 million loan package at 3% for 30 years, the monthly payment due for RCH would be approximately $147,000 per month. That's equivalent to, if you think about your car payment, that, that's interest and principal, and that would, that would be due every month. And that's, the onus is going to be placed on the backs of the 2,800 people that currently belong to RCH. belong to, to RCH. So if you do some amortization on that, it turns out to be about $53 per month in excess of what your current bills might be. And so that would be either be based, be contained within an increase in your rate and/or a subsidy of some sort that would be applied. So what are the benefits of these two companies merging together and working cooperatively? The immediate thing would be, you see, a lot of the litigation would be terminated, which would be, I think, a relief for most of the folks. Certainly, water security is utmost. We'd have sufficient water during the summer month. And this is, this is something that I've seen over and over again, is that it, it applies a regional solution to a regional problem as these, the enormity in, in cost of these projects has gotten to the point where an isolated CCN, at least that I've seen, in looking at various locales and trying to put together, paying for large capital improvements, it takes more than one party typically to, to provide for financing for these. So as an example, if, this is hypothetical purely, but if, if we wanted a pipeline to come up from the south, we could, we could enjoin Heath and maybe Huffines and ourselves. And if that cost was 35 to 40 million dollars, we'd be able to have three entities to split that cost. And so what I'm currently seeing in the arena of, of water is that, again, the, the cost of these projects are so weighty, they're getting so heavy that, and burdensome to the individual customer that, the distribution of that, that debt is encouraged. So that finalizes the first proposal. The, the second proposal is, yeah, I, this is, this is ancillary. It's, it's something that certainly we may entertain, it's, it's all cost dependent, really, at, at the end. And so I, I see that the cost of RCH pursuing its goal of bringing in a pipeline, and again, I'm going to use the value of 35 to 40 million dollars. I think it's a legitimate estimate on that. It, it, it's very, very costly. And so if, if, if RCH were to link up with, with Blackland, I think the cost could be minimized. I think it was something like $8 per month and so compared to $53 per month for each customer. And, and this particular Plan B, it's, it's hard to estimate what the cost may truly be. I mean, I don't foresee RCH just turning their company over to the city. That was negated some time ago. And so this is a secondary proposal. If it were to come into the city at zero cost, is membership owned, then, you know, we may be able to do something, again, like hooking up to Blackland once they get their, their pipe in place. And again, those previous numbers would apply the $8 per month increase on your, on your, on your billing. But if it came at a, a praise value of, say, 12 million dollars, then you're, you're getting close to, besides the hookup of the, the 5 million dollars, you're getting to, you know, half the cost of the current project. So again, the, the appetite for this, I, I'm not convinced that it's there, but it's certainly something that we could take, we could take into consideration. There'd be significant changes. We would bring in the current employees of RCH and, and effectively, things would go on as they, as they normally do. I could see them performing just as well for the city as they, as they do for the, their current employer. Obviously, the, the water committee would be abolished and you would have a management advisory board, which I'm recommending, that would look at all things water, be almost the equivalent of, of the P&amp;Z. And that's, that's, that's virtually Plan B and you can follow up with the rest of it and look at it. I, the biggest concern I have with, with RCH's plan, and this is an aside, but the current plan is, is the weight of, of, of the burden of debt on the individual customer. There are only 2,800 people in this, in this customer base. And when you distribute a large amount of debt on them, it's going to be somewhat onus during the, during the, on a monthly basis. And so RCH has to have more customers. And so how do they, how do they go finding more customers? I've looked across the board, across this part of the county, and I'm, I'm very apprehensive about them getting more connections. In Heath, there's potentially 3,000 connections. I know they've spoken to Heath. I have some information on that, to what degree they've spoken. They've maybe bringing Heath onboard, but as I said before, Heath currently is going to institute six wells that'll deliver approximately 6 million gallons of water. And so the, the need for RCH is probably diminished in that sense. Huffines is a large mud community of 1,700 homes to the west of us. And they asked, RCH asked to maybe join them in on that project and they refused and now they're putting in several wells as well. Development's on the north side and the south side of the, the state hall here, there's approximately 300 homes. They're on High Point. Triple Creek Ranch, which is down south of us, will be bringing in, in the next year or two. They have 1,800 homes that are on High Point as well. And then the Sonoma Verde projects that are coming onboard, there are about 500 homes there, but they won't all be constructed until 2030. And then obviously, the DR Horford project is, is Blackland. So I, again, this is a concern, this is an apprehension I have about distribution of the, the loan and on a monthly basis to the individual currently on RCH. And I'd love to see us being able to pick up another 3,000 homes, but I'm not sure that's in the horizon. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Easter.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that presentation, Dan. Just so that I'm clear, just the, the main issue here is that what you're saying is, is that there's an alternative, it's about, if RCH were to hook up to Blackland, about 5.3 million dollars. Is that correct?
That was based on a, a study that was done in January of 2024. And yes, it was about 5.3, but again, it could be less because of a share cost, cost sharing.
And the cost associated with that 5.3 is eight bucks a month?
Approximately.
And so RCH, I think it was in Mr. Naylor's message yesterday, I think he included a figure of 35 to 40 million as well, so I'm assuming that's correct. And if we just scaled up to eight bucks a month for 5 million, eight goes, or five goes into 40 about eight times, so it's about 64 bucks a month, assuming those numbers are correct. And I don't know that they are, I'm just trying to scale, trying to get an idea what the cost is for something like that. And I know that there's been a lot of folks that want to push, want to have the RCH plan adopted, and I understand that.
Mr. Orchard, that will be the first warning, sir. I gotta, I gotta hold a tight meeting tonight, sir. I appreciate it. So that's the first.
And so I agree, if, if they want to spend the money on it, then that's their prerogative.
That's two, so the next one will have to be excused.
And so what I'm going with all of this is that we are, we were tasked to try to find the most cost-effective way to achieve an adequate supply of drinking water. And if there's a majority of folks that want to spend the extra 40 million dollars on this thing, then is that something that we want to consider? Secondarily to this is that I think it would be helpful to get all of the parties, McLennan-Chisholm, Mr. Davis, with, with Sonoma Verde, Sonoma Verde developers, RCH and Blackland, and try to get all of this litigation dropped so we can find a way forward to resolve all of this.
Tom, that's going to be first warning for you, sir.
And so that, that's kind of what I'm seeing, that, that would be the path forward, to try to get this litigation dropped. And as I understand it, that there's, that, that would be a possibility if there was a new licensing agreement. And I'm trying to understand what they're looking for in the licensing agreement. And I think it was to Mr. Goodwin's point, he said that there's already a 20 million dollar loan that was being provided. And it would be helpful to know if that 20 million dollars, the USDA backed or if it's a bridge loan. Because if it's a USDA loan that is, that is within the scope of Title VII USC 1926B, then it may have muted this whole thing out. And it'd be helpful to know where they're at in the process. And so where all of this goes in my mind is that there's a huge dearth of information that we don't have and it hasn't been provided. And I think it would be helpful if all of these parties were able to answer some of these questions so we could go forward and turn the temperature down and find a regional solution to all of this. I don't think everyone up here enjoys coming down and, and, you know, feeling all of the tension and everything. And so what we are tasked with doing is trying to find something that accommodates all of these competing interests. And right now, RCH is suing the city, I think, Blackland and the Sonoma Verde developers. And I'd like to try to understand how we could get all of those, that litigation dropped and maybe find a, a way forward here.
I presented that, y'all voted it down?
Yeah, no, then that's it. I mean, it just, I think we're, at, at the end of the day, all the water comes from North Texas Municipal Water District. We all live over here. There ought to be some way we could figure out a way to reconcile all these competing interests and get to a point where we're not talking about all of this stuff and focusing on trying to make this community a better spot, putting in trails, I think, the dark skies, all of these things that enhance the amenities. Anyways, that's my two cents.
Mr. McLennan.
They can hear me. They can hear me.
Oh, oh, okay. Thank you. Here you go, Mr. McLennan.
Great thing.
That would have happened back in July.
Have you already talked to RCH back in July?
I don't believe so.
So we're going on for a month to reach out to RCH to figure this out?
I, I believe that, in essence, we have been speaking with RCH because the mayor's been kind of a, a, a working asset for both RCH and for the city in, in terms of being an intermediary. I mean, he's, he's carried information over there pertaining to what we've spoken about and at the same time, we've questioned him. He's been very open about, you know, his conversations with RCH. And, and, you know, and that, in a sense, he's been a conduit. If there are complaints coming over from RCH, he certainly has registered those complaints with us. And I think we've been attuned to that. And, and so we've taken that into consideration. You know, I, I just haven't found RCH to be very, we, we've requested numerous documents and, and other information from them and we have never gotten any, any hard, solid financial information, engineering information that we've requested. And certainly, I, I believe the mayor will probably say that we ended on a good note on, on, on the second meeting, but yeah, I, I was actually just kind of, kind of gave up on, on, on really RCH in the sense that, that they never, on our request, provided a volume of information that we requested. I had a third party ask for an audit, a, a complete audit that was done following the summary that they provided a couple of months back. And that third party has never received that, that complete audit. And so I, I just questioned, and, and other times I've, I've put in for public information requests, I literally handed a copy of, of requests to Robin Mail and I never got any answer on that. And it was a simple, it was a simple financial report that was provided, I think it was in August or September, that I just didn't get one at the meeting that they did hand out. And after literally giving him in hand a, a request for it, never came across my desk, nor was it in email or in any other fashion was it delivered for me. So they, they've just been a little bit resistant in terms of providing documentation. I wouldn't disagree on that. You know, I think we could have been a little bit more proactive in terms of speaking with RCH. At, at one point, I, I think our last meeting, as a matter of fact, there were only two meetings, but our last meeting, I asked if they had any interest in, in coming over into the city at all, because that was the initial proposal early on, that they would be absorbed into the city, much like the fire department. And, and, you know, the response was just, just ignored answering the question, really. So I, I never got a sense, especially knowing what their plan was in terms of applying to North Texas for a pipeline, that there was, there was never going to be an interest in coming into the city at all. I mean, you could, you could read from their public information releases, going to their various meetings, what their intent was going to be. So I, I was never wanting to pursue that simply because I knew it would be, it, it wouldn't bear fruit.
So with Plan A, would it eliminate the water restrictions that we experienced in summer?
Well, according to, you know, my conversations and our conversations with, and these conversations with Blackland, they seem to be able to believe that they, they can provide adequate water for our needs during the summer. I can't speak for Blackland, but they certainly have, have, have made it known to us that they would be willing to, to work with us on this as a, as a viable, viable plan.
Mr. Orchard, Mr. Orchard, you're going to have to head out.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No response back, Mr. Tucker. He's been in. All right, so we'll take that as a point to just, you know, let's just have a peaceful meeting, that Mr. Tucker be heard, that Mr. McLennan be heard, Mr. Easter, Mr. Day, Mr. Brewer and myself. It's going to go down the line. There's going to be other people speaking and asking questions, so let's just let the meeting play out. And I'll, I'll reach out to Mr. Orchard tomorrow. He's, he's a good man, I understand where he's coming from. Mr. McLennan, do you have anything else?
That's all I got. Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Brewer.
Yeah, so I'll, I just have some random questions because I wasn't quite sure how much detail you were going to get into. So if I say, ask you something that you don't quite, don't have, just let me know if it's too much detail.
Yeah, I mean, again, this is a conceptual plan, so if you want me to get into the, the exact details of engineering and such, that's not going to happen tonight. So go ahead, Derek.
Okay. So I guess you kind of alluded to it. So has any member of the Blackland Board told you they are open to this particular plan? I'm talking about Plan A.
No, no Board member has, has spoken to me on that.
And, but you feel confident that they would?
I've had numerous conversations.
I've had numerous conversations with others associated with Blackland, and they seem to assure us that they have capacities to provide for us in terms of water during the summer months.
Like the general manager, or?
People within Blackland.
Okay.
Aside from the Secretary.
What is the, do you know what the projected capacity of the Blackland line will be with?
I'd rather not say on that, I don't have enough.
And would that, would they be able to, I mean, I guess what I'm asking is, is the pipe big enough to not only deal with 6,000 homes with DR Horton?
Sure.
But also the 2,800?
This is, I mean, all of this desire to have negotiation between RCH and Blackland is fundamentally premised on that, that there is sufficient water for both McLennan Chisum, it's ETJ, and all the requirements there on that side with DR Horton. And so, I've asked repeatedly of those folks over there, to make, just to be adamantly sure that they have adequate supply, and they've said yes, they designed the structure for that purposes. Otherwise, there would be no reason to be bearing this to, it would be purely going with RCH.
Mm-hmm. And, so, as far as I know, and I didn't go to the commission hearing, I don't know if it was up there or not, but the DR Horton development hasn't been approved yet by the county, correct? The plat hasn't been?
I'm not familiar with what's going on with the plat.
Okay. I guess my concern would be, you talk about the 2026 date, but if there's a delay with their 6,000 homes getting approved, or if there's a reduction, would that affect the pipeline, and therefore, any timeline if this was to go through?
My understanding is, they're two separate entities, and they're on different tracks, and that, that's my understanding.
Okay.
What I've, after my conversations with Blackland, is that, you know, the pipe will be completed in that timeframe, and they're hoping that it will be.
Okay.
They're determined for it to be, as a matter of fact.
So, I mean, RCH has already made some expenditures, right?
Absolutely.
And if we go with this plan with Blackland, for them to be the sole provider, how will RCH get reimbursed for their expenditures to date, I mean, and the $20 million loan that they evidently have?
Well, how much have they spent? They'll have to, they'll have to tell you what they've spent, and effectively how that's gonna be repaid. I don't have that answer.
Okay. One of the concerns I have with the plan is, it seems that we're substituting one, one middleman for another. We're making RCH, who's now answering the Rockwall, now have to answer to Blackland. And I don't see how Blackland would turn around and sell the water cheaper. I mean, they would have probably the same market that Rockwall has.
I can't testify.
I mean, I don't know for sure, but just.
I can't testify to that, I know that they don't have the highest rate in town, but you'd have to speak to them.
So, to me, we're a community with?
Well, in one instance, I mean, RCH, or Rockwall is saying, absolutely, you have to be off, you know, off our water project. With Blackland, they would be inviting, effectively, RCH to join them.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And so, and I'm sure they wouldn't be doing, sending out that invitation unless they knew they had capacities.
Mm-hmm.
And that they're, I assume that the rates would be, you know, would be comparable to what they're currently at, they're out there now. But, again, I can't, I can't speak for Blackland, or RCH in this case, speculative.
Okay. I guess, the thing I was thinking about was, I mean, I came from a city that owned the water.
Yeah.
Owned the electricity.
Yeah.
And the sewage and all that, so I'm used to that.
Yeah.
And it was kind of unique for me to come here. But what I see with the way that the city's drawn out, when it was created, we have two water providers that intersect in city limits, with a potential third, Blackland.
Right.
Right? And the city's gonna grow, there's, you know, we can debate whether we want it to grow fast or slow, but it's gonna grow, right? To me, I think we're in a much better position if we have two, three water providers that can have a direct connection than just one. I think there's redundancy there, if we can have more than one. That's my opinion on that. So, I think, just in the long term, isn't it better that we have more than just one water provider, that has a direct connection to the main source of water?
I, you know, and I've thought about this, if, you have to, when you make the comparison between Blackland and RCH, fundamentally, it comes down to dollars, I mean, to some degree, when a cost, that's going to be placed on individual customers. So, you're looking at maybe $53, $58, somewhere in that arena, per cost, on a monthly basis, for RCH customers. And so, if you were to, and the cost for a customer solely of Blackland is gonna be negligible in terms of getting a pipe through. And so, if you're going to have a pipe put in by RCH, and funded by its 2,800 customers, are they gonna be carrying that burden for the next 30 years? And it tunes, the total amount over that period, 30 years, is something like $21,000? So, are you gonna penalize those individuals, or are you gonna be bringing more customers on to start to decrease up that burden of debt that they have to pay every month? I mean, is it fair to the individual RCH customer to fund a $40 million project, without even a singular vote on that? Because they don't get to vote on that, as I recall. It's RCH, and its president, and its board say, we're gonna build a $40 million project, and those 2,800 customers are going to finance that. Is there some fairness in that? And if they electively vote to have that, then so be it, that's perfectly fine, but they're gonna carry the burden on that. And as I finalized my presentation, you know, potential new customers coming on board to help out with, starting to minimize or decrease out that debt, where are they? I'm wondering where they're gonna come from? And the only place they're gonna come from is increased density, in terms of homes being built within McLennan Chisum. So, you're gonna get a future council, perhaps, that will start decreasing out the size of lots here, making them smaller, effectively, in order to help establish more people in the community, just to continue to fund RCH's project, as it currently stands. So, the problem I have is, right now, we have a provider that can minimize that cost down to $8 a month, if we connect to them, and then, from a regional standpoint, we can start working with other entities in the area, and we really should, to find redundancy into the future.
Okay. Well, I guess with RCH, though, it's not just citizens within the city, but it expands, I mean, because they have territory outside the city.
Yeah, into the ETJ, and I recognize that.
Yeah. Okay.
We need to take a five-minute recess, so at 7:58, we'll come back, let's just round it to 8:05, please.
It is 8:05. We're going to resume the meeting from the recess. Thank you, hopefully that gave everybody a chance to get a breather. Mr. Brewer, it's back to you, sir.
Okay, I just have a couple, couple more questions. And we'll move on to Plan B, your Plan B. If, if the city buys RCH for say 10 million, and the city assumes their 20 million dollars of loan, are we not hitting 30 million dollars before any costs associated with replacing the city's rock wall as a supplier?
Sure, it would have to, in any negotiation like that would have to be beneficial for the ci- for the citizens. So if, if there were 20 million dollars worth of, of a loan, money spent, 20 million dollars, and it costs 10 million dollars, then certainly it's getting to that point where it's probably impractical for the city to take over. You know, it's an alternative plan, it's one that is less favored, the initial, and as I said earlier on, it's, it's all depending on, on overall cost to, to the citizens and what that would, that would be. So if it got to 30 million dollars, I, I don't think there would be any enticement to pursue that.
And on the options that you had, should the city assume it or buy it? You, you had the 5 million dollar connection with Blackland, an estimate, and then you also mentioned wells as well.
Wells, wells would be supplementary, I mean, you could actually, I mean, you could conceive of, of, of a situation where RCH or whomever is providing water for the city, if it were the city, and they were in need of water, you could sink wells, much like Heath is doing currently, and so effectively, let's say our, our necessary capacity might be 3 million gallons a day, that would be 3 wells, and you do a fourth well as a backup, so at 5 million dollars a piece, that'd be about 20 million dollars, maybe 5 million dollars for infrastructure, so you're looking at about a 25 million dollar project, and I'm not an engineer or an accountant, but, you know, working off raw numbers coming out of Heath, for about 25 million dollars, you could provide about 4 million gallons worth of water, and certainly 20, 25 million dollars is a lot less than 40 million dollars. So, again, it's all cost comparisons, and, and so there are a number of communities now that are looking seriously at wells, and as a matter of fact, again, I mentioned it earlier, was Huffines is, is putting in 2 wells down there to provide water, and so it's an alternative that's quickly coming into recognition in, in cities in North Texas.
Yeah, in my former city, we, we use wells extensively, in fact, in other counties, and we have to pipe it in from there, some of our closest waters 125 miles away. And part of the well factor is you gotta build pump stations, storage tanks, filtration systems, all that stuff.
Absolutely.
And I don't know, did the 5 million dollar figure come from when Huffines did theirs?
The 5 million dollar figure came off of the website for Heath, and, and so you can go to their website and look at, they have a, a project they had, I forget who the engineering was done, it might be Freeman, Freeman Nichols, I believe, Freeman Nicholson? They did the engineering, that, that's online, so you can explore that and see what the costs are for each well. The, the well, if I recall, was 4, 4.8 million dollars per well. But they have, again, they have the capac- the infrastructure already set up because they own their own water company within the city, right? So...
And, so do you think then that if the city, if RCH sold to the city, sold their stuff to the city, we would be better off with Blackland and some wells versus trying to get our own direct connect?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, I mean, that's, that's feasible, that's feasible, certainly we'd be able to, I think, provide for our build-out based on just a Blackland alone's conversation with us, that, that they have that capacity. Wells would be supplemental, and so I, I, I think that could be an answer, but again, I'm not an engineer, and again, I, I'm not going to not say that entertaining, working with another entity like Heath, or maybe Forney, or, or Huffines, as a collaborative project, putting a pipe going down south, much like RCH is doing now collaboratively, would be, you know, we could share costs, and, and again, these are regional, this is a regional problem for everybody in the county and beyond, and so if, if you're going to bring a pipeline in, doing it by yourself solo puts a lot of, like I've said before, a lot of onus on that, that smaller population of people, you need a large population of folks to be on that one pipeline in order to pay off the debt. And, and so I would bring in Huffines with 1,700 connections, bring, bring in Heath with 3,000 connections, not that they're gonna join up with McClintock-Chisholm to do that, I'm just saying as, as a hypothetical. That's, that's the way you approach these kinds of problems, just because of the enormous cost of a capital improvement project like this.
Okay, do we, am I wrong that we have a separate agreement with Huffines to provide them water if we were able to get that capacity?
Are you talking to RCH?
No, the city.
The city, I have no knowledge on that. I don't know.
Okay, alright.
They, they were previously on the RCH, but I think they, because they're in mud, they, they disassociated themselves from that CC end, and so again, they, they had some conversations that I know of with RCH about bringing in water, but I would not prove you to all of that.
Okay. And then you mentioned High Point, I mean, there are parts of their stuff is in the city as well, would we be entertaining buying their assets that are in the city as well?
Would I entertain that? I, I, you know, I can't speak for, for that. I've spoken to High Point in the past, their willingness to work with the city was fairly limited, they're only extended to the 2 developments on the west side, my development, which is Chisholm Crossing, I think 4, and then the other folks across the street, which is 3, they're only extended to the fire department here in, in City Hall, and a little bit to the east, but they don't go, they own the CC end for the 2 developments on either side, Chisholm Crossings, but RCH is currently serving those, they have an interlocal agreement.
Okay.
And they're not, and, and High Point is not willing to go any further beyond, beyond those 2 developments, they're not gonna go beyond those for service.
And, and if this plan was to go through, we're not gonna be certain on the rates that the citizens would have to pay until we know the final numbers, correct?
We would not know what the rates are, we would not know if there was going to be a surcharge associated with it, and, and that's why I would ask for RCH to, you know, provide that information, what's, I mean, they're 15 months out from, you know, finishing their project, I would be asking for them, what's the overall cost? I mean, a rough estimate of what your overall cost is for your project, so you can start to surmise based on that information what the rates might be, or if there's an added surcharge associated with it. So if it's 20 million dollars, let's say it's 20, the cost of their project is 20 million dollars, and they get a 3% loan for 30 years, I think I, I figured out it was 49 dollars a month, believe, no, I think it was 32 dollars, let's see, 20 million dollar loan at 3% for 30 years, it's about 30 dollars extra on, on the billing for each year.
So you're figuring that as being added to the base rate, or the meter rate?
Yes.
I guess is what they call it?
Yes.
As opposed to incorporated in the rates, instead of raising, or raising the rates, or just the tariff?
The rate might, you have to remember that there is, there is a bill due on a monthly basis, so, you know, again, like your car payment, so that has to be paid off, and so if you divided that out based on the number of, of customers available, it would be for, on a 20 million dollar loan at 3%, 30 years, it's 30 dollars. Now if it's a 20-year loan, 20 million dollar loan at 3% on 20 years, which I think the current co-bank loan is, that's 49 dollars a month in addition. So if they want to include a part of that within their rate, that's fine, but there still would have to be a surcharge applied as well in order to compensate, however you mix it up, it's still gonna be 49 dollars a month, or the 30 based on the previous calculation.
Okay.
Because it has to be paid off, right? The debt has, the monthly debt has to be paid.
Yeah, they're, usually it's based on like a revenue bond, where it's based on the rates that they're charged.
However they're gonna do their bond, or, or, yeah, and I'm just using simplistic 20 million dollars, 3%, which is pretty, pretty good rate, for 30 years.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that's it for now.
Normally I go down the line, but I have some follow-up questions to follow up with When did you speak to the Blackland Water Supply Company engineer? Last, I guess, would be the correct question.
Blackland engineer, I, I've, I've sat down in at least, I think, 6 occasions at the meetings, and he has made statements.
Okay, so I would assume the answer there is the last board meeting by Blackland, is when you spoke with an engineer?
I did not speak with an engineer at the last board meeting.
Okay, so, question is, when did you speak to a Blackland Water Supply Company engineer last?
Again, I've sat down, I have not spoken to an engineer per se.
Okay.
I've sat in on the meetings, and I've gleaned all this information from their meetings.
Well, you said you spoke to a Blackland, I took a note, you said you spoke to Blackland Water Supply Company engineer, now you're saying you didn't.
I, I don't remember saying.
You said it.
Did I?
Yes, I wrote it down. So, please, so, did you speak to him?
I misspoke on that.
So you didn't speak to him?
I apologize.
Okay. The Blackland Water Supply Company will have no other cost outside of D.R. Horton, do you, do you know that?
I...
Do you know that?
I...
If, if that's, if, if they're outside of D.R. Horton, is D.R. Horton gonna pay for that, or is now Blackland gonna be on the hook for that?
To my knowledge that, that D.R. Horton, to my knowledge, D.R. Horton is providing all funding for this project of theirs to deliver water.
So even outside of D.R. Horton's area?
All I can say is, is what I've, what I've heard and gleaned from these meetings is that, and in conversations, is that they will, they will be building the pipeline for them.
Right, I, I would like to see that.
I can't testify to outside.
Have you seen the contract from D.R. Horton?
I have not.
Okay, so you haven't seen the contract?
But, but that has been verified in Commissioner's Court, that, that, that contract is secured.
Right, I'm asking if you've seen the contract.
I have not seen the contract, but again, but Commissioner's Court knows that it's been secured.
So, I get a lot of confusion, you, you'll, you've said that you've talked to Blackland Supply Company, or, yeah, Blackland Water Supply Company, and then there's times where you say you haven't, I, so I'm trying to figure out, who have you spoke to at Blackland Water Supply Company that's given you this information, and when was the last time you spoke to them?
I've spoken to people on numerous occasions.
Who are those people?
Those are representatives of, of Blackland.
The names of the representatives of the people?
I'm, I'm, I'm not going to say who they are.
Okay, so we're not gonna say, I got that. But you have not spoke to Jason on any of these plans, Jason being the Board President of Blackland Water Supply Company?
I have not spoken to Jason.
Okay. Have you spoke to Scott since September? Scott Muckamstrom would be the general manager.
I'm not going to say.
Oh, noted. Okay, he is not supposed to be talking to you, I just need to let you know that.
I, I don't...
That was a vote, vote by their board.
By their board?
Their board.
What did their board say?
Their, their board made a vote that the only person...
Since September, I think this came across just last week in an email that I never received, but I had to request.
Okay, I'm just letting you know, I'm giving you a heads up, if you're still talking to Scott, you might wanna stop for his sake.
I, I have not gleaned any names, I'm just saying that my information...
I'm sure I'll hear from Jason.
...that you didn't share with me, that you didn't share with me, that I had the request from our attorney, that I finally found out that there was a...
An email I didn't share with you?
Yeah, you didn't share with me.
What email was that?
That most recent email coming over from, from Blackland.
Yeah, it was, it was emailed to me, Mr. Tucker.
Okay.
Not emailed to you.
Understood, but of courtesy, could you not have shared it with me?
No, it was emailed to me, not to you.
Since I and I on the water committee?
Well, the water committee is shown to be ineffective.
It pertains to water specifically, because we are discussing my plan.
The water committee is shown to be ineffective, and the Board President of Blackland Water Supply Company, Jason, has elected to speak with me.
Okay, do you have another question at hand?
I got, you know what, I do actually. You speak on the wells, and you made a comment that RCH reached out to Mr. Huffines on the wells.
Yes.
It's actually not an accurate statement, I was in the meeting.
No, 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 no.
I was in the meeting, Mr. Tucker.
RCH not reached out on the wells, I, what I said was, they reached out, I'm trying to, to work with, with Huffines in getting an agreement where water would be brought in, okay?
So what, do you know what, so you don't know what the agreement is about, so what the agreement was about, and what the conversation was about, is Mr. Huffines, I was in the meeting, Mr. Huffines asking if Mr. Naylor with RCH would be willing to set up an emergency interconnect so that they can supply water to refill those wells?
It's different conversations, obviously, because, but my conversation with a representative of Huffines was that, that...
Who was that representative?
I don't need to, it's by that information.
I will always give you the people I talk to, clearly you have not so far.
No, I have the courtesy of a private, private conversation with somebody, so I'm going to abide by that.
If you're dealing with city business, and you're doing city decisions, and you're talking to somebody outside the entity of the city, I think it's a very big concern that we need to know who you're talking to. If you're taking advice from somebody who is not a part of the city...
In executive session, I'd be more than happy to go to that information.
Look forward to that. That just goes back to so many different questions right now. You made a point, the, point out that Blackland did a vote to enter into this agreement with their co-bank, and that the, can stir...
Or, you, you, RCH, I think you're referring to.
RCH, thank you for the correction. So, RCH, you said they made a vote that the members didn't get a say in, is that correct? Is that kinda, something like that? Would that be the same type of vote that we did to cancel the contract that the people asked you not to do, but you did?
This is a representative body, I'm not gonna make that comparison, I don't think it's fruitful.
Who did you speak with at Heath? You said you spoke with somebody at Heath, the city of Heath, you said you spoke with somebody at the city of Heath to get the information on the wells.
I'll, I'll provide that with you for executive session again.
You may have mentioned that the, a lot of this is, you may have mentioned about hypothetical amounts when it comes to spending, so is your approach on spending this kind of amount of money for the city and entering us into these sort of agreements, do you base that hypothetically when we're talking about these sort of important things?
You have to be more specific, I'm not quite understanding what you're referring to.
Go, okay. When was the last time you spoke to High Point?
Last time I spoke to High Point was back in October, I believe, middle, about the middle of October, the last time I spoke to High Point, yes, I, I recall, it was at their board meeting in October, probably around the 15th, had a conversation with John Washburn out in the hallway, and there were other people present at that time.
In October, okay, and then, so when was the last time you texted John with High Point?
The last time I text John was July 26th.
Okay.
Let me, let me...
John sent me 5 screenshots today from October 22nd, October 8th, October 7th, September 28th, and September 19th of text messages from you to him. You just said it was July.
Let me retract that, because it was the last phone call I had with him was the 26th.
I said text, that was clear.
Text was probably around the 19th, I asked him a question about, I forget exactly what it was, but it was...
I'll tell you the dates, they were 7, September 19th, September 28th, October 7th, October 8th, and October 22nd.
Yep, it was, it was in October, that's, that's correct.
Okay. The 2 options that are proposed, are these the only 2 options?
Absolutely not, I think there could be a, a myriad of options if we had partners to, to work with, but with everybody being litigated, come on guys, come on.
I asked that, we don't, if I'm gonna, I have the chair?
Yeah, I understand that, but, you know, we, we...
I have the chair.
You proposed decorum here, and people are snickering in the background and trying to in, in inject their, their inferences here, so...
Push the concern to me and I'll address them. Is that your concern?
I'm asking you to, to maintain decorum.
Mayor Protem Tucker is asking that we maintain better decorum, if y'all could please grant his request. Mr. London, I do see you, give me a few seconds and I will grant you 60 seconds. Do both of these plans, don't both of them render control over RCH?
I'm not really interested in who controls what, what are my interests in getting sufficient supplies of water for the, the lowest cost possible, whether it's Blackland, RCH, High Point, it really doesn't make any difference to me.
Okay. Plan A requires consent of RCH and Blackland, and Plan B requires consent of RCH, what have you done to secure that?
These, these are just proposals, so I haven't worked to any degree trying to enforce those, obviously I don't have the capacity or authority to do that.
The current plan that we're talking about, when did you complete this plan?
What plan are we talking about?
The 3 pages you brought tonight?
Which, which specific plan, A or B?
When did you complete, complete these plans?
Plans, when did I complete them?
Correct.
I worked on them until this afternoon.
Okay, why didn't you come forward with these plans before voting to terminate the license agreement with RCH?
I don't need to answer that question.
Okay. Who has worked on these plans at the city? Have you consulted with an attorney regarding the viability of these options?
I have consulted with no one other than Mr. Holla.
Mr. London, I'll recognize you for 60 seconds.
Just point clarification from Mr. Holla, Texas Penal Code subsection 39.02 requires elected officials to be transparent, is that correct?
I don't know, do you submit a law?
Okay, well, the, the answer is yes, Mr. Tucker. I refusing to divulge the information that the mayor is asking for and that we, the citizens have asked for, you're in violation of that code. I highly encourage you to consider and reconsider answering the mayor's question.
Thank you, Mr. London, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. London. Have you discussed these water plans with Blackland? We already know you won't tell me who you're talking to at Blackland, so I'll skip that. Has Blackland, Blackland requested a contract with North Texas Municipal Water District for water that would be used to supply to RCH?
You'll have to ask Blackland on that.
Do you know whether the North Texas Municipal Water District will agree to allow Blackland to do this sort of connection?
You'll have to talk to North Texas on that.
Didn't the city try to get water from North Texas and they refused to provide such water?
That's historical, I don't know if they did or didn't, that's under a previous administration.
See if I have that in here. You know what, I won't waste my time, it's not in there.
It may or may not be, I don't know.
It's, it's not, it's not in here. Did Blackland provide you with estimated cost in a timeline from Blackland to connect to North Texas and start us a plot with RCH?
That's, that's public information coming out of a meeting, board meeting?
Have you talked with Blackland's developer, D.R. Horton, to confirm that it will pay the 35 million from Blackland if you didn't make the plan?
As I, as I said earlier, that they, Blackland confirmed that in front of County Commissioner's Court some months ago.
Have you looked at the developer's way to finance their 35 million, or just RCH?
That's not in my interest that, that that's for the developer.
What are the rates and volumes that would be charged to RCH if this plan were to go through?
I'd say that, you'd have to talk to Blackland and RCH if they ever had that communication, that negotiation between them.
Do you not believe any of these plans put RCH in the same position it has now? Do you not believe any of these plans put RCH in the same position it has now with Rockwall?
I, I'm not ready to testify to that at all.
You're not in court. It's not a testify. The Blackland Board would be able to control RCH by restricting its supply of water and assessing the rates. Is exactly how that would go down.
By definition, they, uh, Blackland would be the wholesaler and RCH would be the retailer.
Did you watch my town hall?
Not at all.
So then you wouldn't understand how wholesale and retail works. I gave that explanation.
I'm, I'm glad to review. I'll go back and review it.
I'm pretty shocked as the mayor pro temp would not watch the town hall that's related to the issues that you're on the water.
Your videos and vignettes and, and to tell you the truth, I, I, I've gleaned a lot of information that was pretty worthless most of the time from them.
Yeah, I found that to be equivalent to this book in your three pages. Under any scenario, RCH will need to continue to supply water to Sonoma Verde for at least the next year and probably the next couple of years. Would you agree? Under any of these scenarios that you presented tonight?
It would.
So it would. Yet we are terminating the contract.
That, does that agreement can be renegotiated at any point in time if, if, if RCH is willing?
How do you renegotiate a contract that you want to cancel?
It can be renegotiated. If, if, if they release litigation, then we'll be more than happy to, to sit down and talk to them about that.
I will follow up with that. Since the city council voted to terminate, RCH is right to do that. How does this work? How does these, how do these plans work?
I'm, I'm not gonna reply to that.
Okay. Shouldn't the city council have thought?
How many more questions do you have? I'm not doing your forty-nine questions.
Well, it was just under fifty, so you.
No, I'm not doing your forty-nine questions. If you want me to answer more of these questions, I'm going to be reasonable about answering questions. You can submit the rest of these questions to me and I'll give you a reply.
That's not how that works. You can just say no, it's fine. Shouldn't the city council have thought, these are questions from constituents. These are questions from the people, so I'm gonna ask them.
Questions that you threatened me with today. You have forty-nine questions.
Oh, I didn't threaten you. I told you that. I had, I had questions coming and I planted on Seek and the Ship. I know exactly what I said.
You know, this is not, uh, you need to learn how to share. I'm, yeah. Mr. Day is, is, is ready and waiting to ask his questions. Would you be allowed to do that? I will not answer any more of your questions.
Well, I will still, I will say them for the record. Should the city council have thought of the needs of Sonoma Verde residents to continue to receive water service over the next year before terminating RCH's license agreement? People, you'll have to assume the answer was either probably gonna be no or won't speak on it. Was the plan to just terminate and see what would happen? In order for the water plan involving Blackland to work, one, Blackland and North Texas Municipal Water District, I'll just say North Texas going forward, will have to enter into a connection agreement. Developer will have to agree to finance the connection. Blackland and RCH will have to agree to the interconnection. And last, Blackland and RCH will have to agree to a water purchase agreement. How long will all these negotiations take and what is the likelihood that they can even be successfully accomplished? RCH's plans and process. RCH already has, one, a connection agreement with North Texas, financing for the connection with North Texas, and sources of water for Sonoma Verde now and in the future. Sonoma Verde residents should rest easy in knowing that. Isn't the simplest and safest course of action for the city to allow RCH to finish what his, has started and is in the process of successfully completing? RCH's license agreement.
Mr. Mayor, could I, could I interject here and ask a question on your last question? Is, I would be more than happy to, to listen to RCH if they would start providing some information regarding their fees and, and what the surcharge is going to be, what their rates are going to be based on some, some reasonable estimate of the overall cost of their project. Why is it that in fifteen months they're gonna be finishing their project, but they have, they have no information for the public to get a sense of what that cost is going to be? And if it's forty million dollars between thirty-five and forty million dollars, let them say so. They've said so on several occasions already.
Are you aware that the?
Conversation and at least be honest with the public.
Okay. Are you aware that the Judge Rakow did recuse himself, right? You know this, right?
I do.
Do you know who the new judge is from Dallas? That's the visiting judge?
No, but you, you, you can tell me who that is.
I would think as a water committee, you should know. It is Kim Cook.
And?
You argue that the terms of the RCH license agreement need to be renegotiated. What will the terms of this renegotiated agreement look like?
We're not prepared to provide terms. That's for discussion. That's for negotiation.
I thought we were doing a plan tonight. I guess I should have read the, the look of that agenda.
This is conceptual for the most part. I'm trying to bring parties together. That's really what this is about, and we're trying to.
So we still don't have a plan and we've been.
We do have a, a, a conceptual plan indeed. You're looking for.
We do not have a plan.
A hundred-page plan. You're not gonna get that.
This is a hypothetical.
This is, it's a very, it's a very.
If, as you contend, the RCH's license agreement can be terminated anytime, why does it need to be renegotiated?
Well, it's renegotiated. That's what I'm saying. And, and, and based on their, them dropping litigation against the various parties so we can all get together and, and, and speak to these issues. And that's what's precluding us from, from getting anything done is because RCH continues to litigate and separate and isolate these other parties that could very well negotiate an outcome for us that would be quite beneficial to all of our citizens.
I believe the next, just few questions, you'll be able to answer these.
I'm hoping so.
Same as the crowd. If Blackland Water Supply Company shows they need fourteen million gallons per day for future planning, and RCH is sizing for a thirteen million gallon per day for planning, have you spoke with all the parties to secure the correct equipment? Pump stations, water towers, pipe, infrastructure, and such to take on such a project?
I have not spoken, but according to Blackland, to my knowledge at least, I haven't heard from RCH on this point, but according to Blackland, they have those, that ability.
Speaking on the aquifers, what if they dry up? Please keep in mind that there are only a few wells that are active in Rockwall. None are at a high volume.
Maybe you should direct that question to, um, uh, Mr. Day.
RCH cannot sell water to another third party without permission from North Texas, and the same goes for Blackland Water Supply Company. That is actual standard language in North Texas contracts and requires a board approval to change. With that being said, how would your plans work? I'm assuming North Texas would have to redo this.
With Blackland being a wholesaler and with a direct connection, selling it to RCH as a retailer, does that not work in that sense? Are you hoping that RCH is going to, uh, supply some, somebody else down, downline on that?
I don't know, Dave.
You're asking the question.
Right. I am asking the question, which requires the answer that you gave. Thank you. If Blackland Water Supply Company has not had any conversations with the city, which I believe they have not per my talks, then how can Blackland possibly commit to any city plan presented here for providing water for current regional? I have not spoke over you, Mr. Tucker. Please allow me the same courtesy.
I apologize.
Then how could Blackland Supply commit to the city's plans presented here for providing water not only for current regional needs, but for all the future growth, which is the twenty-five-inch pipeline I believe you alluded to?
I didn't allude to a twenty-five, but, uh, again, Blackland has said in conversations that they could become a regional supplier of water and that they could supply for build-out of McLennan Chism and the ETJ based on, you know, their engineering and their capacities.
Okay.
I'm hoping that answers your question.
Yes. Have we approached Blackland to seek any peaceful negotiations to purchase them instead of RCH?
No intention to do so.
Just checking. Do the members of RCH get a vote in any of these plans?
Members of RCH, through their representatives, they would, in a sense, not the ETJ folks, obviously.
I do recall at one point you said the ETJ and RCH city customers were all one and the same in this. Is that now not true?
And I would appreciate if the, people in the ETJ would, would join with us and, and, and voice a, a desire to either come into the city through annexation or at least join in with our plan through conversations like we're having now.
So you realize it's a sixty-five percent approval to pass such of a plan? I would say, given the election show.
Sixty-five percent approval and help me out.
With RCH, the members, it'd have to be a sixty-five percent approval rate.
Okay. So you're saying this is unlikely?
Very unlikely. Very unlikely.
Okay. Well, just, I'm fine with that vote. If that vote comes across and, and, and that vote is taken and, and it's not approved, then so be it, just as long as these folks know what they're being charged on, on a monthly basis above and beyond their current rate and, and the project demand.
I believe Mr. Orchard said he didn't care as long as he had water.
I also, as long as he had water, yeah, at any cost, apparently. So, and, you know, but there are some people that, that sixty-five dollars or sixty dollars a month extra, you know, that, that starts to add up, so, um.
Um, onto the CCN, and this is kind of important. Onto the CCN for RCH, what if there is a significant growth within RCH's CCN? After all of this near completion of a contract, and then all of a sudden Blackland cannot give RCH more water due to more obligations to support water for their needs? Then what?
A significant growth within.
What if there's a growth?
Their CCN?
Yeah.
That would, that suggests it would be high-density units would be coming in. And within the confines of McLennan Chism, you know, we're trying to minimize that, that, that kind of in, in growth here.
Yes, we are.
So I, I don't foresee that, and the projections that I see being on the development committee, uh, the only high growth are within the high, are within High Point districts, not within the municipality itself.
I just have two questions left. And I want to point out one more thing under, again, under state law, there's a critical distinction in the ETJ in the unincorporated areas of the city. We have specific responsibility in the city to our citizens. We have shared relationships with the county, which are defined in I.L.A.'s. We have no legal jurisdiction or responsibilities in the unincorporated areas. How would that impact those customers? And I will add, in my talks with the county, they are not gonna be on board with this either.
Uh, that's open for negotiation. I mean, you, you may have had your conversations with county, which is new. Uh, I, I, there's a larger board that particularly is coming into play in, uh, in January. So I think, uh, it doesn't have to be adversarial. I think that we can have that conversation and there can be negotiation.
Last question, or statement, however you wanna take it. Forty-million-dollar talking point. Where did we get this number? And I'll finish. The only official number is the loan from co-bank of twenty million dollars. And yes, while more may be needed, that number has not been determined yet. You are basing this on a guess and assumption. There was a talk with Huffines, RCH, McLennan Chism at one point to discuss a talking point of action from Huffines to have an emergency interconnect to refill the wells. If the wells are so strong, why have the emergency interconnect? This number was given to fulfill the full-on obligation with that process and specific need, meaning the twenty million for what he was already doing and then running different lines to get to the wells was how that number was derived. I was there. Therefore, my question is, what firm? Firm, being the key operative word here, proof do you have of this forty-million-dollar cost that you keep speaking on?
It's thirty-five to forty million dollars. First of all, the, the engineer, uh, that's working currently for RCH and their operations manager came over directly from, uh, Blackland. And in that process, they were very knowledgeable about what the costs are gonna be for implementing a pipeline from the south. And again, as I said before, these pipelines are very similar in terms of the, the, the pumping stations, the lines, uh, the, the, the storage tanks associated with these projects. They're, they're very, very similar. And so based on, uh, an estimated cost of Blackland's project, I would say it's not twenty million dollars. It's gonna be thirty-five million dollars, which is Blackland's cost, uh, for RCH. And so that's, that's part of it. The other is that, again, speaking with Huffines, they wanted to do a thirty-five million dollar project joining in with, uh, with, uh, RCH. And that project, to my mind, uh, after the conversation, was about a pipeline and them helping out with that pipeline. And so that's the information there. In terms of, uh, apparently, uh, David Naylor said at an HOA meeting, he gave a rough estimate of his project being thirty-five to forty million dollars. Okay? So what else is there? I mean, that, the, the real problem is, again, within fifteen months, they're, they're going to be finishing out this project. Where are hard estimates for that project? You would think for a, a company that's supposed to be responsible, that they would have some firm estimates. I mean, a hundred thousand, two hundred, three hundred thousand, I can understand. But they need to have those estimates currently provided for maybe a water committee or a city mayor. And, and in that sense, from that, we could project what, what the costs were going to be for, uh, the debt put on the individual rate payer. So where are the numbers from RCH? That's what I've always asked. Where are the numbers? Where are the hard estimates? Tell us more. It's not gonna be twenty million dollars. These projects are not that inexpensive. It's gonna be much more expensive, so just be honest with the folks out there and let us know what the true cost is so we can do a comparative.
Yeah, I, I agree with the honest with the folks. I think that goes for, uh, the city council as well. Mr. Day, I'll yield to you, sir.
I mean, just a, just a quick question with respect to, I, I, I mean, there's a whole lot of, I, I, I guess I'm gonna appear gasping with some of the descriptions of people's approaches to things. And, you know, I kind of, I, I learned a lot from the last less, or from the last meeting where I was upset. And, uh, I'm trying to be a little bit more optimistic and try to find a more consolatory tone for this. A lot of the stuff that Mr. Tucker is bringing up was brought up, it's been around for a long time. This is not something he's just kind of pulling out of the ether. This has been around a long time. In fact, the first time I came across it, uh, was in twenty-twenty-three, when, um, I saw a Facebook post. It was actually written by Mr. Naylor himself. And, uh, he doesn't post a whole lot on there, and so I'm sure he's watching the meeting, but I, I saw it. And it was, uh, something I thought was very interesting at the time, which was he was pursuing an interconnect to bring water relief to people in the city. And I, and I thought to myself, wow, that is a, that's a really good idea. An interconnect is an inexpensive way to bring water in, and it turned out that there were objections. And I wasn't on the city council at the time, and, and unfortunately, uh, it fell apart at that time, but it was kind of his Plan A. And I, I, I've always been fascinated by Plan A because I, I realized that there was this, there was a, a regional provider that was coming online in the form of Blackland Water Supply Corporation, which I knew nothing about, but I'd heard good things about. In fact, a couple of the employees over at Blackland Water Supply Corporation wound up, or, uh, Supply Company wound up going over to RCH, and they now provide the services that you guys, uh, use now to this day. Uh, Mr., uh, remind me of his name, Robbins' last name? Mayall, thank you. Mr. Mayall and, uh, the office manager, both from over there. Um, so, Blackland was producing some pretty good employees, good enough where we, we hired them and we, we still use them. Uh, so Plan A at the time was kind of along the lines of what the Plan A that Mr. Tucker seems to be presenting, which is, his is just kind of more of a souped-up version of that, which is, hey, instead of just doing an interconnection between these two companies, and honestly, I think Blackland is, I've attended three or four of their meetings, uh, their, their public meetings. They are, in my opinion, a fabulous leader-driven company. They've got a great board. They're transparent. They're open. They have, they have open hearts. They're, they're kind people. Um, and I think the city would benefit with, uh, working with them. I believe RCH would benefit with working with them. That's my opinion. It's been going on since twenty-twenty-three. I, I've kind of been sitting on this for a long time, and when this, uh, when we had to cancel the contract for, for reasons we've gone over many, many times, and it's, it's something I don't wanna rehash. Doing a souped-up version of Mr. Naylor's original Plan A does resolve the city's concerns. And the city's concerns are basically to not encumber our assets. And when we were looking at this, and, and by the way, if there was a deal that didn't encumber the assets, I was gonna let it go. That was the one issue I have as a trustee of the infrastructure. I took that very seriously. I took that to heart because this is, this is, it's a big deal being up here and, and looking out for people. Um. So it would remove the concerns, but when we started to look into this, I said, wow, that old Plan A that he had is a far less expensive option that also provides, it provides what people need on the same timeline at a much lower cost. And under those circumstances, I was happy to give RCH back a water license agreement for as long as they, they need it, because it, it resolves all the city's concerns. It also ends all the litigation. Nobody has to sue anybody anymore. We don't have to threaten anybody anymore. We can be good neighbors. Like, that was actually, in fact, what David Naylor was saying at the time, we're good neighbors. Blackland was saying, we need to be good neighbors. We were saying good neig-, I actually heard the word good neighbors from you, actually, when I came to the city council. That was the first time I heard it. Can't we just be good neighbors? I remember saying that. And so this Plan A has always been to me, I call it the good neighbor plan. And so this Plan A has always been to me, I call it the good neighbor plan, because it's always been out there. If we all just be good neighbors to one another and respect one another, we could save a lot of money. We could, we could respect the concerns that the city council has, which are legitimate concerns, by the way. This is not something we're just doing. I, I have no interest in interfering with RCH's business at all. I want to see the, the end of the litigation, the fighting. I want to save a lot of money. I want to get you cheap, healthy water as quickly as possible on the same timeline, saving tens of millions of dollars. So I think it's interesting that there's this kind of historical overlap between Mr. Naylor's Plan A and Mr. Tucker's Plan A. I don't see the harm in talking. I, I deeply respect the comments of him. All these gentlemen are all saying, let's talk, let's file the, he's saying, we don't have the data. He's right. I don't have the data. One of the, one of the axioms, or one of the questions that we always ask as, and I'm a conservative, is compared to what? Is Mr. Tucker's deal or Mr. Naylor's deal, which is really very similar? Is it better than what is being proposed or was being pursued currently? We don't know. So what is the harm in talking? What is the harm in putting together a group of people from the city, including the mayor, including the water committee, including Mr. Hildebrand, including Mr. White, and sending them on? Mr. White, by the way, is our accountant. Does, or do you do a lot of accounting for the city? What is your main?
I'm a manager, man, sir.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Yeah, my, you're my numbers guy, so I assumed you were doing a lot of accounting for the city. Yeah, okay. Well, maybe you'd go anyway. But as a, I think it's a goodwill gesture that we talk to everybody and we get this worked out, we save a lot of money. I believe this deeply, that this is a resolvable problem. This isn't a problem of not, as I brought up last time, not enough water in the pipes. There is water going to be in the pipes. The question is, how do we get it to you? How do we get it to you cheaply, equitably, fair, in a way that doesn't harm RCH? Because I have no ill will to these guys. Their legacy asset for the city, it's been around since the sixties, I think even before, right? But I think at least to the sixties. So how do we preserve this legacy asset, take care of our employees, Mr. Mayall? How do we take care of the people of the city so that they're comfortable with what they get as a service? And I believe Plan A, which is what he's proposing, which is really just a souped-up version of what Mr. Naylor's idea was. And I know Mr. Naylor, now his objections, he's, he's invested himself in this other idea. But we've never actually had a full and fruitful conversation as a community whether or not that was the best, the best thing. Now granted, the city probably took positions in the past that made that difficult then, but it shouldn't be difficult now. I believe that they are reasonable people on all parts. I genuinely believe this. I, I can tell you, these guys at Blackland, they're superb. They're superb, and they are going to be working with the city. They're going to be a partner of ours. Not necessarily in the context of this, but there, there's new developments coming in, and they are in the CCN. And I believe that getting these two companies to work together creates a synergy. We're stronger working together than apart. And so I, I see a lot of advantages to having a conversation. If, if, if a conversation with the folks over at Blackland reveals that, they say, we have options that we might be able to provide, provided RCH wants to work with us, given the legal situation, because RCH has sued them. I mean, that's public knowledge, I'm not just throwing it out there. It's common knowledge. They have to overcome that. And so we need to find a way to overcome that. I honestly think the lawsuits are ridiculous. That's my opinion. And I think if the lawsuits disappear, and we can talk to Blackland, because they are good neighbors, I believe this, and I believe that RCH wants to be a good neighbor. I believe that we can come to a reasonable conclusion that doesn't delay water, provides plenty of supply. Now, I, I had to work independently because I had the same questions that Mr. Brewer had, and they're great questions. What is the capacity? Well, the capacity is, according to the, again, public meetings and the public information requests that I, or not public information requests, but the public information they made available during those meetings, is there's more than enough capacity to be a regional provider throughout this entire region, possibly even all the way down as far as the lake. So the current demand on RCH is they need to provide, my understanding is, two-point-one, and then they get, they get underwater currently by about a million, so about three million. So let's say they need four. My understanding is, is that Blackland currently, currently is saying that they're contractually at about twelve. So they can provide all the water that we need. That's my understanding. They, they get, the pipe is, is being paid for by third parties, so it's not going to be at public expense. When you put RCH's direct connection, that's going to add another thirteen million gallons on it, so you're talking about what, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven million gallons for four million gallons of, of demand? I use the analogy, it's like, to me, it's like buying an airline so you can get free I'm not saying that RCH isn't going to have a need in the future to go and get a direct connection. And I think there's a partnership potential in the future to make that happen with the city. But as the mayor likes to point out, sometimes it's not now. It's, they would say in legal business, it's not ripe for that decision. I like this Plan A. I call it the good neighbor plan. Do we have all the answers? No, we haven't negotiated with anybody. One of the problems that we have as a council is that we have to operate in a very deliberative way. We meet meeting to meeting. And it's very easy to cancel a contract, but boy, it's really hard to build everything back up and to get it back on track, which is what we want to do. And I think that's what Mr. Tucker's trying to, I think that's what the mayor's trying to do. I know that's what Mr. Easter is trying to do. These guys are working really hard to resolve this problem. And I think kicking the tires on this and talking to these people and convincing people to drop lawsuits and become good neighbors again, just like Mr. Naylor wrote on Facebook, wait, it said good neighbors there, but just like the, the plan he gave on Facebook in 2023, I think is, is something we need to explore. And if it doesn't work out, then we need to know why it doesn't work out. And that requires us to talk. So that's, that's my independent analogy. And by the way, I've been very public about this. I mean, people have emailed me, they're like, what do you think? And I basically say, this is what I think we should do. I've been saying it probably for two months. And if there's a problem, email me, you know? Folks, I, I've had many lunches with, by the way, I, I appreciate everybody that met with me the last couple of weeks and talked to me and, and, and some of you guys straightened me out. And I appreciate that. It's important. And some of the input that I'm giving you right now actually comes from the meetings I had with those folks. Many of them are hardcore, you know, they came in, it's like, why is the city doing this? And, you know, that kind of stuff. And I think this is something that a lot of people are interested in. We just need to do this in a sober manner. We need to do it in a deliberative manner, in a respectful manner. I think that the guys, like I said, I think those guys at, at Blackland are fantastic. I think the people that love RCH, those are former Blackland employees that are running that operation. So we need to understand this heritage and how it all comes together. And I, I see a lot of merit to this. And I, I don't really have a whole lot of questions other than to say, I kind of concluded the same thing that Mr. Tucker did independently a while ago. And I, I'd like to see this explored. Thank you.
I'll recognize you for sixty seconds. Sir.
Yeah, my name is Peter Hankel, I live up in High Point Ranch. I just wanted to correct you on the twenty-three email that Mr. Naylor put up. If my memory serves me correctly, and maybe there's somebody in the audience that can correct me if I'm wrong, the RCH was looking at water restrictions in the summer of twenty-three, and Mr. Naylor was looking at a way to get more water so we could lift the restrictions. Okay? So that was why he was looking for a hookup with Blackland. Now, the problem was that Blackland was also getting its water from Rockwall, and they could not give us. So it was not a sense of looking for, it was looking for a way out, and I don't know where. But that was the reason that he was looking at this hookup, okay? And it didn't go through because of the, both getting the same water from the same source. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, sir. I totally appreciate that. And yes, to, to that extent, it wasn't from an email, it was actually on Facebook, that's where I saw it. But in terms of the, the idea and following and tracing this through, it came from the Facebook post from, I believe it was March, April, May of 2023. And yeah, to your point, and effectively, it was really just the nucleation of it and following this out.
Mr. Nickle, I'll give you sixty seconds. And then after that, I need to ask you a question, Mr. Hall, on this so that we can move forward.
When I made my public comments at the beginning, I was under the impression that all the options with Blackland and any other outside source had already been terminated or denied by those potential sources. And that's why I said that I thought the best option would be to quit all of the squabbling and let RCH do its business. But I like very much what Mr. Day said. It makes sense. If we can, if we can overcome these obstacles, that does sound like a good place to start. And I don't know what the hangup is, just getting all the people in the same room sounds like a challenge. But if that could happen, that's where I would go. Thank you.
Thank you. The, I'll just go. With this being discussed and considered recommending the city of McLennan-Chisholm negotiate a water agreement, how does that, it's not take action, it's not, it's recommending?
Yeah, the only action we, the, the consider is the action portion of the item, but all you can consider is recommending. That means my head's too, right? But it would just be recommending that the city and RCH and Blackland negotiate a water agreement. So it's just you're, you're voting on a recommendation.
Mr. Kipit, I'll give you sixty seconds, and then we'll do this vote.
Thank you. Mediation 101. Remove the obstacle. The obstacle is termination of the contract with Sanom Verde, for Sanom Verde. That is the only action you can do. If you do that action, then potentially there is an opening to get all the parties together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kipit. All right, so we'll just take the motion on, or we took the motion, so we'll take the vote now on that, reconsider recommending the city of McLennan-Chisholm, RCH, and Blackland to negotiate a water agreement. I guess all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Are you making the motion?
The motion was already made.
Make the recommendation.
The motion was already made.
Can, can the motion be repeated, please?
Angela, who made the motion?
Can we get a repeat of the motion?
I believe the, when he made the motion, he just made as so written or something along those lines. So then it would be as written, Mr. Day. Discuss and consider recommending the city of McLennan-Chisholm, RCH Water Supply Company and Blackland Water Supply Company negotiate a water agreement. So we're basically just going to ask them to talk.
Well, yeah, I, I actually-
Send a letter or something like that over to them and make the recommendation based on what our discussions meant.
Correct. Mike, but he basically just said exactly what I just said. You, you missed nothing. It, it was honestly a repeat. So that's the vote. So it's just all we're doing is, we're going to send them a letter saying, hey, we'd like you guys to talk. That's exactly what that is. So all those in favor of the city asking to, these two companies to sit down and talk, say aye.
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 That is unanimous. That takes us to seven point seven.
Discuss placement of invocation and pledges. They should always be right after call to order.
I'll put this on here based off of the last meeting we had where the prayer and the pledge went down the list. To me, as soon as there's a call to order, we give respect to God and we give honor to our country. We put it forth on the list last time after executive session, and tonight it was third on the list. I know how I feel. I mean, I don't even know why it has to be an explanation, but I would like to find a way to make sure, no matter how that agenda is submitted, when we call to order, the very next thing we're going to do is we're going to give our invocation and we're going to give our pledge. If anyone has a problem with that, I just would like to hear it. It's just open discussion. Mr. Brewer?
I don't have any problem with it.
Mr. Day?
Yeah, we talked about it a little bit earlier, and I don't have a problem with it.
Mr. Tucker?
Completely in favor of it.
Okay, so going forward, Angela, for some staff direction, no matter what happens on the agenda, first is call to order, second is invocation and pledges. Folks, we have pretty much done everything out here in the public. I'm going to put us in a ten-minute recess until nine fifteen, nine sixteen. At that point, we will be in executive session. Thank you. It's nine oh six.
It is 10:42 and we are back from executive session. Apologies for the length of time. I'm going to go through these pretty quick. 8.1, I will be looking to take a motion for Jeff to have an increase of $8.84 per hour with his new title as finance director. And I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there, if there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Can you show that unanimous? Next item inside the same agenda item of 8.1 is a pay increase for Angela. Our city secretary was moved from the interim to the permanent. When we did that, we now are making that pay, gosh, I'm going to try to use a big word here, commiserate, to her new role, official role as the permanent. So that will be, I'll entertain a motion to increase Angela Juning's pay of $2.10 per hour.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
If there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye please?
Aye.
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 Next item is 8.2, to bring in an interim city administrator. We had a notification from Conrad that he will be retiring effective February the 5th. We started talking with a few people. And we are going to, I'm going to look to me, have a motion made to accept Beth Stevens as our interim city administrator to begin her duties on January the 30th. I'll entertain that motion. Do I have a second? Show Mayor Pro Tim Tucker made the motion and council member Easter seconded. If there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye please?
Aye.
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 Okay, show that unanimous as well. Item 8.3, we had discussion on and I'll entertain a motion on item 8.3.
Yeah, I make a motion to authorize Dykema Gossett LLC to file a petition of review with the Texas Supreme Court for the city of Heath versus McClendon-Chisholm, cause number 1-22-1204 in the 5th District Court of Appeals.
Do I have a second? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye please?
Aye.
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 8.4, no action taken.
That finishes out item number nine for us then and brings us to council member reports and announcements. Mr. Easter?
Mr. McClendon?
Mr. Brewer?
Just an update for the Home Rule Commission. We've completed the document and sent it over to Mr. Holla for his review. The plan is to have a joint public hearing with, in January. So between, once we get the document back from Mr. Holla, we'll post it and allow him to, or allow the public to see it. And then we'll have a public hearing so that the public can ask questions, make suggestions to the commission. And we'll go from there. I think it's, we're anticipating doing the final document presentation to the council at the first meeting in February.
I'm sure I speak for everybody up here. Thank you for all the work that you've put into this and the time and to the members of the committee. Thank you for all your hard work and time as well. Mr. Day?
Yeah, just a real quick message of gratitude to those that, you know, took me up on my invitation to sit down and talk about anything. We talked about water, we talked about city business, we talked about music. I just want to say to those citizens that took me up on that, I deeply appreciate it. I was very, I was moved by the opportunity. I learned a lot from it and I don't want to name them, they know who they are. And it's, yeah, my gratitude. I also want to extend my condolences to Melia Sorio, who's been a long-term resident. And she's been on, she is on Home Rule Committee, her, she had to put her dog down. And this is a very traumatic experience for, for dog owners. And I know that that happened today and I just want to let her know that we're all thinking about her.
Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, so sad on that point. I've got three puppies and losing one is going to be difficult. I wanted to make a correction and this was, I was alerted to the fact of this. And I got a note from a citizen saying that I had, and this goes back to some of your questioning, that I had spoken to a black land engineer when I, when I was president at one of their meetings. And you know what? I did speak to one. They were grabbing something to eat and it was a very incidental conversation, like a minute, two minutes? And there was nothing significant that came out of that conversation. But had there been, I would certainly be willing to report it. But I had totally forgot about that. And so I wanted to report that.
Thank you. It is 8:10:48. We're adjourned.
It is 10:42 and we are back from executive session. Apologies for the length of time. I'm gonna go through these pretty quick. 8.1, I will be looking to take a motion for Jeff to have an increase of $8.84 per hour with his new title as Finance Director and I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there, if there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Can you show that unanimous? Next item inside the same agenda item of 8.1 is a pay increase for Angela. Our City Secretary was moved from the interim to the permanent. When we did that, we now are making that pay, gosh, I'm gonna try to use a big word here, commiserate to her new role, official role as the permanent. So that will be, I'll entertain a motion to increase Angela Juning's pay of $2.10 per hour.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
If there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye please.
Aye.
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 Next item is 8.2, to bring in an interim city administrator. We had a notification from Conrad that he will be retiring effective February the 5th. We started talking with a few people and we are going to, I'm gonna look to me, have a motion made to accept Beth Stevens as our interim city administrator to begin her duties on January the 30th. I'll entertain that motion. Do I have a second? Show Mayor Pro Tim Tucker made the motion and Councilmember Easter seconded. If there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye please.
Aye.
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 Okay, show that unanimous as well. Item 8.3, we had discussion on and I'll entertain a motion on item 8.3.
Yeah, I make a motion to authorize Dykema Gossett LLC to file a petition of review with the Texas Supreme Court for the City of Heath versus McClendon Chisholm, cause number 1-22-1204 in the 5th District Court of Appeals.
Do I have a second? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
8.4, no action taken. That finishes out item number nine for us then and brings us to council member reports and announcements. Mr. Easter, Mr. McClendon, Mr. Brewer.
Just an update for the Home Rule Commission. We've completed the document and sent it over to Mr. Hala for his review. The plan is to have a joint public hearing with, in January, so between, once we get the document back from Mr. Hala, we'll post it and allow him to, and allow the public to see it and then we'll have a public hearing so that the public can ask questions, make suggestions to the commission and we'll go from there. I think it's, we're anticipating doing the final document presentation to the council at the first meeting in February.
I'm sure I speak for everybody up here. Thank you for all the work that you've put into this and the time and to the members of the committee. Thank you for all your hard work and time as well. Mr. Day.
Yeah, just a real quick message of gratitude to those that, you know, took me up on my invitation to sit down and talk about anything. We talked about water, we talked about city business, we talked about music. I just want to say to those citizens that took me up on that, I deeply appreciate it. I was very, I was moved by the opportunity. I learned a lot from it and I don't want to name them, they know who they are and it's, yeah, my gratitude. I also want to extend my condolences to Melia Sorio, who's been a long-term resident and she's been on, she is on Home Rule Committee, her, she had to put her dog down and this is a very traumatic experience for, for dog owners and I know that that happened today and I just want to let her know that we're all thinking about her.
Mr. Tucker.
Yeah, so sad on that point. I've got three puppies and losing one is gonna be difficult. I wanted to make a correction and this was, I was alerted to the fact of this and I got a note from a citizen saying that I had, and this goes back to some of your questioning, that I had spoken to a black land engineer when I, when I was president at one of their meetings and you know what? I did speak to one. They were grabbing something to eat and it was a very incidental conversation, like a minute, two minutes and there was nothing significant that came out of that conversation but had there been, I would certainly be willing to report it but I had totally forgot about that and so I wanted to report that.
Thank you. It is 8:10:48. We're adjourned.